Free meeting of the West Springfield Zoning Board of Appeals is hereby called to order at 7:00 PM. In accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 38, I must announce that anyone intending to tape the meeting must identify themselves to the clerk and provide his or her name and address for the record, and we inform those present that any document that is to be considered or discussed must be made part of the record of the meeting, and the original or a copy must be submitted to the committee before there is any discussion regarding the document. Documents include photos, plans, drawings, computer printouts, and simulation, video presentations, and the like, as well as letters and all written materials.
Um, recording. Joe Kelly, please.
All right, our first order of business on our, of our, uh, this evening is a board reorganization. Um, is there a nomination, uh, for a chair position from the board?
I nominate you, Reed.
Sorry, I nominate Reed for chair.
I second.
All right, I accept. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. All right, is there a nomination for vice chair? I would nominate, uh, I will nominate, uh, Mike Alexek.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then is there a nomination for secretary?
I nominate Joe Kelly.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next order of business is acceptance of minutes from our meeting of November 28th, 2022. Has everybody had an opportunity to read those?
Yes.
Uh, make a motion that we accept the minutes as except, as, as presented?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I have one abstention. I was not here for the last meeting. Um, all right, regarding the hearing for C and A D Realty, um, this evening, we will not be able to proceed with that, um, hearing this evening, as we've had one member with a medical emergency this evening, and Mr. Kelly has to recuse himself from that hearing, so that means there's only three present, so we cannot take any action on that, uh, item this evening.
When are you intending to reschedule that to?
So, the board, I just checked, has 65 days to open the hearing after we received the deal. We received it on November 30th, uh, so that puts us kinda close to that 65 days. So, the 3rd of February is 65 days.
February 3rd would be next Monday, or a week, or two weeks from today?
Uh, if, that's a Friday of next week, so, uh, any, it would have to be before Friday.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm gonna have to move.
Sure. So, the 3rd is Friday of next week, so it would have to be heard before Friday of next week unless you, uh, would be agreeable to continuing the, to a later date.
So, what's the day you're looking at for your next week?
I mean, I don't know what, for availability. We can't do the 1st, Planning Board is meeting.
What's that, Allison?
Wednesday, the 1st, isn't doable, Planning Board meets.
Uh, I'm thinking 30th then. Oh, I'm just, just to request to save you some time, because next week is horrible. Um, and next day we do it, so, if we move it to the following week?
So, I mean, there's council on Monday and Conservation Commission on Wednesday, so if it were to be that following week, it would have to be Tuesday or Thursday. Um, you could also just agree to move it to the next ZVA meeting, which is the 27th.
Will you send the, the next meeting?
Yes.
The next meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Can you just talk to my client for a second, if you don't mind? What do you have next week?
What's the, uh, board's availability?
It doesn't have to be in the evening either, if, I don't know if that makes it better for any of you, or for you.
Be getting time to start working 30 times, uh, in the afternoon or later.
Oh, I was gonna say, it's, so, we have mostly working individuals here, so it's just like, most of our hearings are gonna be after 5 o'clock.
I mean, I'm available Monday.
The 30th.
Joe?
I wouldn't be able to vote.
No, you can't vote.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry, that's the one you're off anyway. Chris?
I could do Monday or Thursday.
All right, then, on that 30th, it's gonna be, because I am not available on Thursday. So...
Then we will just have to verify with Andy, who's the fourth voting member.
Right.
Well, so we have to continue the hearing to a date and time certain, so it's either the 30th, or we...
Well, without the opportunity to talk to him this evening, um, it seems prudent to just continue it to the next Zoning Board of Appeals hearing, meeting on the 27th. I mean, to your point, we do run that risk. I don't know what his schedule is. I mean, we would be making an assumption that he is available on the 30th.
Yeah, I don't know what the specific cause of tonight's absence was, or if it will carry over till then, I don't know.
We'll continue the hearing to the 30th, um, but you just have to understand that we run the risk of having to continue it again, based on lack of being able to communicate within this evening.
I understand the reason for it. I understand the reason for it. I'm just looking for the date that the hearing is gonna be scheduled for. Not that we're assenting to it, I just need to know what it is.
And what time?
Excuse me?
Time.
Uh, 6 o'clock, can you guys do? All right, then, uh, we will continue the hearing for C and A D, CA and DA Realty, uh, 633 to 643 Westfield Street, um, until Monday, January 30th at 6:00 PM.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
All right, our next public hearing is Brian and Joanne Despard's variances for the, uh, variances for the property located at 369 Rogers Avenue, in a Residence A2 zoning district. The applicant is seeking relief from Section 300, Table 6-1A, Table of Regulations, which requires a minimum 75-foot frontage, 30-foot, uh, 30-foot front setback, and 100-foot average lot width in the RA2 zoning district, and relief from Section 300-6.3 East Sub-1, which prohibits accessory structures in the front yard. The applicant is proposing to divide the property such that the existing single-family home will be on a separate lot from the existing shed and garage structure. This hearing was continued from November 28th, uh, 2022. Is there somebody here to represent or present the, uh, variance?
Good evening.
Uh, just state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Paul Malik. I'm a lawyer at Dougherty Wallace Pillsbury &amp; Murphy in Springfield. I am a, uh, resident of 43 Rogers Avenue, West Springfield. I'm here on behalf of Joanne and Brian Despard. Uh, for those of you who don't know me, I was a member of the Zoning Board of Appeals from 1991 to 1999. I was chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals for five years. For seven years, I wrote decisions by hand, then I gave them to a secretary to transcribe. Um, I know that the number of variances was infrequent, but when circumstances arose where variances were warranted, they were in fact granted by the zoning board unanimously. There are classic examples I can remember, on Piper and Bernie, where a building was being erected because the topography was such that it was gonna violate setback on the side yard, but it was the right thing to do. I was involved in many sign variances when the automobile dealerships were going in on Riverdale, based upon shape and topography. It was the right thing to do. I'm here on behalf of Brian and Joanne, because I think that the variances that they're requesting ought to be granted, and it is the right thing to do, based upon all of the elements of a variance. All of the elements of a variance are here, on this piece of property, from the history, from the way the properties are now shaped. One parcel is now nine-sided, as a result of changing the boundary lines, another one is seven-sided. The topography, I have pictures which I'd like to submit, um, is sloped everywhere you look on this property. Um, there's really nothing usual about this property. It's unusual, and that's when the Zoning Board of Appeals should step up and grant variances for the unusual, not the usual. So with your permission, as I go into a little bit of a recap and some history, I have a revised plan. I don't know if the board, Mr. Chairman, has the revised plan?
Yes.
Okay. I have, um, part of the assessor's maps, which show, uh, frontage, which is substantially less than what is required, and two of these parcels on this assessor's map show frontage less than what the Despard's are intending. I'd like to introduce this into evidence as well, if I may. Makes sense. And also have a packet of pictures, which show the uniqueness of shape, soil, and topography. Uh, gentlemen, by way of history, this parcel was the former R. H. Bragg Farm. The barn, the shed, and the house that you see have all existed there, according to the town's property card, since 1920, and upon information and belief of the Despard's, they believe those improvements have existed for more than 100 years, beyond 1920. That the shed was used for milk sales, bottled milk, you'd come up, give them a nickel, and you'd walk away with a bottle. The barn was used for milking and living quarters. It's funny how history repeats itself, in that the Despard's are before you, so that they will have the opportunity with your decision, hopefully, to live in the barn and have a dwelling at the barn. The, uh, back building has already been partially improved. There does exist a living room, there does exist a bathroom, and, in fact, many years ago, a former building inspector, our friend Patrick Moore, inspected the property and allowed for recreational use of the building, after, uh, viewing the same driveway that exists today, which is bifurcated, you'll see that in the pictures, and the reason that the Despard's want to live in the back building is so that they can rent the current house and retire with less financial strain. You'll see that the plan, since November, has been revised, based upon the input that the Zoning Board of Appeals gave the Despard's in November, namely, and first and foremost, please look at the new frontage. The new frontage is now 57.03, rather than 32.03, a vast improvement of almost double. The configuration of the lots, keep in mind, this is important when granting a variance, is no longer four-sided, it's nine-sided for parcel B, and seven-sided for parcel A. The third request of, um, average width is no longer necessary, so the applicant would withdraw that request, and only focus on frontage on Rogers Avenue, and, uh, front yard of, uh, 17.6 of the barn. The reason I say that is because the average width of A is now 102, it was 115, but more importantly, B is now 106, rather than 59. So these lines have dramatically changed, and I think are an improvement, and more palatable, but nonetheless, under any circumstance, variances are warranted. Um, I, I can't emphasize enough, you have to focus on the shape. The shape here is unique, perhaps even more unique is the fact that there are existing buildings, and these lines are drawn to accommodate today's setback requirements, like 25 feet of the rear of the house. So, we're not talking about rectangles and squares, we're talking about incredibly different angles, to accommodate the frontage on Rogers Avenue, and with the rear of the house. As far as the frontage on Rogers Avenue is concerned, I'd like to make a few points. The first point is, if you look at the map that I presented tonight, I turn your attention to 412 Rogers, which has 20 feet of frontage. I also call your attention to 438 Rogers, which has 53.56 of frontage. In other words, the Despard's at 369 will have 18 feet less than required, but, but, still, 37 more feet than 412, and four more feet than 438 Rogers. This map shows the frontages in that part of Rogers Avenue. I obtained those from the town records. The purpose of frontage is really twofold. Number one, to make sure that there isn't overdevelopment, and more importantly, that fire trucks and safety personnel can access the parcel. For 100 years, there's been no problem accessing these existing buildings, and now we're just putting up artificial lines to accommodate the local bylaw of the barn and the house. To what is the most unique part, again, that the shape of parcel A is cut to show a distance of 25 feet from the rear, and 17.6 feet of the barn to the rear line next to the house. But think about, you know, this 25-foot setback of the house is 25 feet for some part, but a majority of the part is that you're talking about 100 feet on B, and approximately 150 feet on A. You're talking about 200 feet for the rear distance, all the way back to B, and on A, you're talking about, about 125 feet. It's only in this one section where you're talking about 25 feet, I hope I'm making myself The second purpose of the frontage, as I said, is safety, and making sure trucks, uh, fire trucks can access. That's exactly what Pat Moore was trying to figure out when he went there, and he gave a certificate of occupancy for the barn to be used for recreational purposes. He looked at the, at the driveway, he saw the slope, and nonetheless, thought that it was safety, if, it would be safe. If he didn't, he wouldn't have issued the certificate of occupancy. As far as the front yard of, um, the building, known as the barn, I think it's somewhat of a misnomer, to say that the front at 17.6 is the front. It's really the side, in my opinion, but technically, it is the front. I say it's the side, because if you look in the picture, you'll see that the face of the barn is south. The 17.6, which is so-called front, is really a side, and that side measures 42 feet from the house. It measures over 113 feet from Rogers Avenue. These lots, as carved, still will be safe, fire trucks can access, personnel, safety personnel can also access, despite the fact that they have severe slope, not only in the driveway, but there's a retaining wall, when you look at the new plan at 51.42, there's a retaining wall there, because it's so severely sloped. Another reason why a variance is in order. I think that to raise any part of anything just doesn't make sense, and seems unnecessary, and would just create an undue hardship. I would submit that the law and the facts more than amply justify the grant of these variances. The frontage variance should be granted when you consider the other two lots in the very near proximity at substantially less than 57 feet, and the front yard is really a side yard, in my opinion, but nonetheless, given the fact that it's constrained by slopes, it's constrained by trying to fit the 25-foot setback on the second-story house, um, the fact of the matter is that this house that sits in front of the barn serves as a screen from Rogers Avenue, it's 80, it's 115 feet or so, before you even get near the barn, it's so far setback, it's very inconspicuous, but more importantly, it's safe. And for all those reasons, I would ask that this board grant the two variances being requested. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Malik. Is there any questions for the presenter from the board? Before I open it up to the public?
I guess just to clarify the hardship, as you were saying, shape, shape and topography?
Shape of both parcels, how the lines have to be shaped to be nine-sided on one parcel. The topography, Joe, um, look at the pictures. I walk my dog every day, up and down Rogers. When I go by the Despard's, I'm climbing the hill. When I come back, it's nice, I get to go downhill. I look over at this parcel, it's like this, it's like this, I go onto the property, the house is sitting up, the driveway is going up, the barn is down here, the shape and the topography, the facts and the law fit here.
Allison? Just as a, a point of clarification for the new acting chair, um, do I close the public hearing? Uh, do I open it to public comment first?
Yeah, so, the, the public hearing shouldn't be closed until you're confident that all questions that you have, and that the audience has, um, have been answered, and that there's no further information to be received on either end, that's when you would close the public hearing.
All right, thank you. Um, is there anybody from the audience that would like to comment, um, or address the board this evening regarding this? Just, when you step to the podium, just, uh, state your name and address for the record, please.
Uh, Jay Stup, Building Commissioner. I just wanna clear up a couple things, the stip of aggrancy, I think you guys have a copy of it. Mr. Moore did say it could be used for recreational purposes only, but he also made a note on there it couldn't be used as a dwelling unit, and he wrote that out here because there was some issues there, they were using it, and then he, they did some remodeling there, wrote recreational use only, could not be used as a dwelling unit. The other thing I'd like to say is, the existing lot of Rogers is a compliant lot, so, our ordinance says you cannot create a non-compliant lot. They're creating a non-compliant lot by reducing the frontage, so they're creating the non-compliant lot, and also, as far as the shape goes, they're, they, they made the lot lines, they're creating their own hardship, so I don't know how you can grant the variance if they create their own hardship. Um, really, that's it, those are the three points I wanted to make.
All right, thank you, sir.
Hi, I'm Ann Clanna, I'm a butter, I live at 73 Poplar Ave, on West Springfield, and, um, I don't, I don't see the shape of a lot being a hardship, from, from what I've read. A lot considered as having an unusual or unique shape if it is substantially different from other lots in the immediate neighborhood and within the zoning district. We own lots behind the property, and our lots are odd-shaped, so I, I don't think it's an anomaly that this is the only odd-shaped lot in the district. And as I said last time I was here, I'm afraid that if we approve the subdivision of the lot, we open the door for other individuals with non-conforming lots to also apply for variance. I believe you would be setting a precedent, and this could lead to the potential of devaluing some of the properties in the town. and this could lead to the potential of devaluating some of the properties in the town.
Thank you. Sir?
Again, for the record, my name is Gerard Matthews. I live at 185 Rogers Avenue. I also am an attorney, who's had a very long practice dealing in real estate. I also served on the Board of Appeals. And I serve with Mr. Malick. I have a lot of respect for Paul. We've dealt with one another on a number of occasions with real estate. He certainly is well-respected in the legal community and he also happens to be a good friend of mine. Having said all that, and knowing that Mr. Malick is here to represent his client as best he can, I take some of what he said with a certain grain of salt. But I would also have to say that I wholeheartedly disagree with his conclusion that a variance is required here. I prepared a number of cases that I was going to present to you, but I figured that it's too long-winded and probably some of the salient points will get lost in the, in the debris. So I did bring one case. This was a, an appellate court case that made a ruling that I think has some impact in what we have here. I've often thought that the problem with laws is that lawyers write them and they write them for other lawyers, but not anybody else. So it's very confusing for everybody else to understand what they were trying to accomplish. But even for a lot of attorneys, it's difficult to know what they're trying to accomplish. And I know that to be true in this case because there has been so much litigation over the years with regard to these. And the only way we know the meaning of words and phrases is that the courts tell us in their decisions. So here I have a decision. This is going back a few years, but in this particular case, somebody applied for variance because of a frontage issue. They didn't have sufficient frontage. And they tried to say that there was a shape problem with it, which sort of opens up the ZBA to allow them to venture further once they've hit that threshold, that there's something peculiar to the shape, which is what a lot of ZBAs do. In any case, they granted the, the variance. That was appealed to the Superior Court, which is the first step. And the Superior Court upheld the ZBA and felt that the decision was well-grounded. Not being satisfied, the butler then appealed it to the mass appellate court. The appellate court, in looking over the decision and looking over the factors which had led the ZBA to grant the variance, annulled it. And here's, here's their language. "The variance cannot stand. It is clear now, if it was not at the time the judge heard the case, that a deficiency in the frontage of a lot is not a circumstance relating to the soil conditions, shape or topography of such lands that will satisfy one of the several statutory prerequisites for variance under Chapter 40A, Section 10. It is equally clear that a lot cannot qualify for variance if the circumstance creating the hardship is itself the result of a transfer that violates in some respects applicable zoning requirements for buildable lots." Now, that second point is what Mr. Stup talked about, that they have created their own hardship. It's not so much that they've transferred anything, because they haven't. But in the creation of those two lots, they are in effect transferring one conforming lot into a situation where now we have a conforming lot and a non-conforming lot, the one that lacks the frontage. So again, what Mr. Stup brought up, in which I would say is the second portion of this, you can't create your own hardship. If the hardship now is the nine-sided parcels, they created it. If there's a lack of frontage, they created it. This is the hardship that they want to save, but the law says that that's not enough. The other thing I would say to the shape or, or to the original application here, they came in here and they talked about the original lot being irregular, whatever that meant. And of course, Mr. Malick added to that by talking about the topography of the property. Topography isn't something that's a springboard for opening up a Pandora's box to do whatever you want to do in a variance. It's got to create the hardship. What is the hardship based on topography? There is none. And you know how you can tell that? Because the lot has been developed. There's a house on it, there's a substantial garage, there's a shed on it. You can't say that topography has prevented anything from happening there because they have used it. And that's really the measure of a hardship. Can you use the parcel? In this case, they have. And if they now create the two other lots, they're still using it and topography has nothing to do with it. You know why? Because they're not going to remove anything. So the topography is not an issue at all. The shape is not an issue at all. What they have is a single-family lot, which has been fully developed, and they want more. They want a second lot, they don't qualify for it. And that is no different than anybody else in the section who has their frontage in accord with the zoning ordinance. So having said all that, not wanting to belabor anything further than that, I think you're more than justified in saying that this legally does not qualify for variance. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else from the audience that would wish to address the board?
Hi, Joe Kleine of 73 Poplar Avenue. In my opinion, the request for a variance by the applicant to divide this property is not what a variance is intended for. I believe a variance is to be considered for properties for problems that zoning ordinances couldn't foresee when enacted, not to create a non-conforming property from an already conforming property. In this instance, creating two properties, neither one conforming to current zoning bylaws. Secondly, granting of this variance may set a precedent for all zoning districts in our town. It may create requests for variances by property owners the board may not have intended. This may take up the board's time and perhaps other issues arise from it, such as legal, legal issues. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else before I close the public hearing? Seeing none, motion to close the public hearing? Second? There's a motion to close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we will discuss this and be back to you shortly. One thing I'd like to, to say to the board is that, you know, desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of such bylaw. The landowner's desire to maximize his profits from his land does not qualify as a substantial hardship. And this land can definitely be used to, Mr. Matthews' point there, as it is already developed. There is no irregularity to this, in my opinion. The, the, the variance is for the current lot, not for the irregularly shaped other two lots that they're looking to do. I do not see a hardship here to substantiate a variance. Mike?
Yeah, I agree. I think they're creating their own variance in this case, which is requiring us to take action on it. I believe the building commissioner approached it properly to start with and I tend to agree at this point.
Yeah, I mean, and we have to be mindful that we are a precedent-setting board. And what we do could potentially, to quote somebody from the audience there, open Pandora's box. Joe, comments?
So I echo the same sentiments. I mean, I just haven't seen anything, history-wise, to show that this was intended for a different use. You know, as long as I've been alive, I'm familiar with the property. I've known the previous owners. I mean, it's always been that big recreational barn. Probably, I don't know what it was before, it was some kind of a barn or farm before. But again, I echo the same sentiments. I think the hardship is created. And I don't think the intended use was ever as a dwelling. So it'd be hard for me to, to get over the frontage and the created hardships.
Chris?
Excuse me? I would also echo the three sentiments that have been expressed so far. I initially have tried to approach this with a very open mind because I do want people to be able to use the land on their property as they best see fit. However, having done a little bit more research and seeing that there is a history and a precedent for cases such as this being overturned in appeals court, I think that this would be outside of the scope of our legal authority to grant something like this. So I would agree.
All right. With that said, I will make a motion to deny the variance request at 369 Rogers Ave in the Residence A2 Zoning District.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Our next hearing is Saleh Akosbek, Appeal of the Building Commissioner's Action. The appellant is challenging the determination of the Building Commissioner that the mixed-use structure at 39 Upper Church Street cannot be converted to a three-family residence because such use is not permitted in the Residence B Zoning District. Is there somebody here to present?
Good evening.
Just state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Saleh Akosbek. I reside at 52nd Street, West Springfield, which is the third floor of 39 Upper Church Street. And I'm owner of the property. And I'm here to request that I would be turning the commercial property, which is the first floor, to residential for the reasons that my previous tenant, who was, it was, it was an office space and it was an accounting office. And this office was receiving anywhere between 500 to 700 and people and they served a lot of clients. My argument is, unfortunately, there is no parking space in front of the property. There is a small public parking. There is a Mittenique school and there is a church which has a language center. A lot of people are getting into the church and out. And also, a lot of students are walking to the school. There will be a lot of traffic if I were to have another business open up there with this certain amount of clients coming in and out of the building. And I'm not requesting this only in my favor. It's, I'm also requesting is to reduce traffic. As we've all, all heard about a month ago, we had, we had an accident right down the street on the Piper Road. Traffic's increasing. Right in the corner of Westfield Street, 2nd Street and 39 Upper Church Street, there is a substantial amount of traffic that's in the mornings after work. And having this property as commercial will only increase it. Mr. Jay requested, if, if we're to approve it, to put installation of the fire sprinklers. I am willing to do anything and everything that's possible to make it a residential building and have a single family living in the place so that there will be less traffic for our neighborhood. There will be less getting in and out and creating a safer environment just for the neighborhood. That, those are my concerns. It's, I've, I've seen my tenants having clients coming in and out. There is a lot of cars parked in front of the property, right on the side of the road. It's a dead end for the last probably six or seven years, according to the Google researches that I've done. 39 Upper Church Street was closed to traffic. And that creates a lot of traffic right in front of it. A lot of cars are getting parked and people are getting in to talk to their accountants. And even if I were to give you a lawyer, give it a lawyer or real estate place or a dentist, there will be a lot of people getting in there and spending anywhere between 30 minutes and an hour and 30 minutes. And that would unfortunately put at risk all, all the kids that are going to Mittenique school and a lot of language students going into church. And also, there are people that are practicing their religions on Sundays at church. Unfortunately, we do not have enough parking space. And those are my reasons. And I'd liked, this property initially was a three-family house and there was a family living in there. And currently, I mean, for the last probably four or five decades ago, it was turned into commercial. And the same company had stayed there for the last four decades. So I am requesting it to turn it to residential building as my neighbors, like 132nd Street, which is right behind my building. It is a three, it is a three-family building. There is way less traffic and way less people getting in and out of that building. And I feel that's safer. And I'm willing to do anything and everything in terms of putting a fire sprinklers or increasing the safety of the building to enable this. Thank you.
Any questions to the board, to the applicant?
Just want to clarify, so you're looking to have a three-family, not one single family?
No, sir, three families. So it's already, the fir-, it's 39 Upper Church Street is the first floor.
Yeah, very familiar with the building.
Yeah, and then 52nd Street and 3, sorry, 32nd Street and then the 52nd Street is the top floor.
All right, so you disagree with the assertion that it's a two-family property? It was owned that way? Is that the request in front of us?
As far as I was told, it was turned from three-family to two-family and commercial building. So they basically changed the permit of the first floor a long time ago. And I'm, I'm just requesting it to be reinstated if possible. Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Or for the petitioner, rather? Is there anybody else from the audience that would like to address the board?
My name is Ahmed Gunay. I am a Realtor. I was a Realtor helping him buy that property. So this property is mixed-use, as he described. The first floor is commercial at this point and second and third floor are apartment units. So in terms of, you know, the frontage, all the rules, there, there, there doesn't look like any problem in terms of making it commercial, in terms of making it residential. I know that you have all those guidelines and stuff, but I have been through and I purchased and sold lots of multifamily properties. This property qualifies to be three-family units based on my observations. So I, I, I'm sure you have, you know, better guidelines in front of you. But if you, I mean, if you wonder how this house is shaped, is the environment is suitable for a three-family, it is perfectly suitable for a three-family residential building. Thank you.
Jay Stup, building commissioner. We did a little research on our property. It was never a three-family. Stella Kalamarakis from the assessor's office looked back as far the records that they had, as far back as she could find. It's always been a two-family. There was a variance granted in the early 80s. Allison might be able to give me the exact date, that granted commercial use on the first floor. Was it early 80s?
1967.
Oh, 60, back in 67. So 67, there was a variance granted to allow for the commercial use on the first floor. At that time, reading the minutes of that meeting, it was still a two-family granting commercial on the first floor. We checked the zoning for that area. It's always been RB all the way back as far as Allison could check her records. The zoning map hasn't changed. It's been RB, it's back as far as we can see. So right now, it's a compliant building. It's in compliance as a two-family with the variance for the commercial use.
Sir, first floor, if there could be any inspections to, to see if it's suitable for a three-family. There, there, it has four different entrances from, from each side of the building. And at the moment, my argument is just to improve the quality of the, of the property and usage and also, of course, reducing the traffic in the neighborhood. Thank you. That's, that's my argument.
Do you have six parking spaces on-site?
Yes, sir.
Off-street parking?
Yes, sir. I have four garage spaces and there is two car spaces right next to the garage. And if needed, parking two more cars in- And if needed, parking two more cars in front of the garage would also bring a lot of more space.
Stack parking or whatever?
Yes, sir. There's six spaces.
Because I believe the zoning requirement is that each apartment has two parking, two dedicated off-street parking spaces to it.
Just following up on that, Reed, are they actually using the garage for parking now? Do cars park in there?
Yes, sir.
Any further comments from the audience to the board? Just state your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Servet. I live in 85 Moore Street, Agava, and I am very close to this house. I think when we consider the church, the people especially walk to church for the religion reason, and when we think about the students who walk to the school just opposite of the house. So once it is converted into the residential, we will have less cars, I think, and that is, I think, going to decrease the probability of getting any accident. So it's going to be more safe for kids and church people. So that's why I believe it should be allowed.
Any further comments or questions before I make a motion to close the public hearing?
Reed, I just had, we had comments that were received.
Okay. You want to read those into the record, then, Allison?
It's a little lengthy, so I don't know if you want me to read the whole thing, but the gist of it, it's from and abutter, that their main concern is the amount of additional parking that would be required by the change. In the recent past, a tax accountant rented the bottom floor for many years and would have only one or two clients for short visits. Another residential unit will probably include two or more car owners looking for parking for a longer period of time. The neighboring school, church, and apartment buildings use the on-street parking, and there's limited availability, numerous accidents and near accidents with that area due to all the cars and lack of good vision. And they are having issues with people blocking their driveway. I also received a call today from someone that declined to identify themselves, but stated that they're a neighbor and that they are also concerned about, or they're opposed to the change and concerned about the lack of upkeep on the property and what other consequences would be had by changing it to a three-family.
Anything else?
There is enough parking space and about the upkeeping. The first floor is going through renovation right now, and there is basically a dumpster there. That might be a concern, but it would be out of there within 10 days. And that's about it. And also, all the buildings that are behind my building, they're putting their trashcans in front of the building so that they're picking up every Monday. And unfortunately, I will have to clean it every time when they don't pick it up or something fills over it, and I'm taking care of it. And just this morning, I saw another small baby mattress that's left there and not taking. I don't own it, I haven't done it, but I still have to upkeep it and clean it. And sometimes, even though it's not mine, or my neighbor's, or my tenant's, I will have to clean it. And that's generally what happens, and sometimes, unfortunately, it just falls on my land, and I'm the one who's, you know, everybody sees that it's as if it's mine, but it's not.
Questions?
It's my question, I don't know if it's a question for Allison, but I mean, it just, if the question to us is what the building inspector's determination was, you know, I think that's one thing. It sounds like he's asking us to change. Is this building suitable for a three-family property? But I don't think that's what's officially in front of us, or if that's really up to us to vote on. So I guess that's the only thing that's thrown me off, is if I read this the way I interpret it, or understand this the way I'm interpreting it, it's just that he's saying the building inspector is incorrect for his determination.
That is my interpretation as well. He disagrees with what the building department has said with regards to a three-family residence at this property. All right. With that, I will move to close the public hearing. Do we have a second?
One more thing, sir. Zone B is covering all the way my neighborhood, right? And one of the reasons that we're not able to turn it into three-family is because of the zoning, there's certain zoning rules. Currently, quite a bit of my neighbors own three-family houses there. And if it's possible to even delay the decision and have inspect the building, and certainly if there has to be any improvements done, as I said before, I will be willing to do anything and everything, including the water sprinklers, to make it possible.
I guess my only question there, I don't know if the building department or planning would be able to answer this, but unfortunately, there are numerous illegal three-family houses throughout West Springfield and various areas. There are not that many actual legal three-families because they started out as two families with a walk-up attic, and then they got converted. I don't know about the adjacent properties, whether they're two or three families.
There are some three-families and might even be some four-families. I do know that at one point, the property to, immediately to the south, but the cutoff line is at the subject property, but immediately to the south, it was Residence C at one time. I think it was the 1953 map, which did allow for multifamily. So it's possible that they were established legally, but they were in a different zone.
All right. So at some point in the past, this dated property was in a zone, in a Residence C zone?
No, this property was not.
Okay.
But the properties very near to it, like on the other side of the street, were in the RC zone.
All right. Is the current zoning of like, the street, what is it, Summit Street?
Yes.
Behind him and the street that goes down to the railroad tracks, what is that currently zoned?
So the north side of Summit Street is zoned Residence B, Second Street and Prospect Street until they meet Summit Street are zoned RB. And as you go further west into the Ashley Street neighborhood, that's all zoned RB. It was just a pocket of Prospect Street and Second Street that were at one time Residence
Could we throw another zone in there? Yep. You want to just step up and look at this or whatever briefly?
Here, I have a couple.
But this is the part of the land that we're talking about here, as far as doing it differently or whatever.
This is C at one point. The RB is protected in.
Yeah, the green is.
B.
Yeah. This is the section of C. Right behind it. The house directly. Reed's question is, was that legal for a family or? There is numerous properties around that that are multifamily. That's why I was asking what the zoning around that was, but it's just like there's this island of zoning here. I don't know if that was that way or done that way when they converted the Y to apartments All right. With that, there's a second to close the public hearing?
Second?
All right. We'll talk, and we'll, you can hear the deliberations. Oh, I'm sorry. All those in favor of closing the public hearing? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Mike?
Going off of Joe's comment.
I mean, the challenging determination of the building commissioner in this case is probably not the proper approach. I mean, Jay, I believe, is correct in the zoning of it and the determination. It's, would a variance be warranted in this location, which isn't what?
It's not a variance. It's just an overturning of a decision that the building-
No, that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
Or he could approach it as a variance, saying we'd like to put the three-family in that zone, which would be a variance. Is that how you see it, Joe? Yeah, I think this should have maybe attacked it differently, but I agree with Mike. I mean, I think the building inspector, it's two-family, it looks like a two-family, the history is a two-family, it seems like it's always been a two-family. So I think to challenge the building inspector's assessment is not going to get him to three-family, but maybe there's a different way he could go about it to try to secure that. And I don't think that's really for us to weigh in on, I guess, as far as an approval goes. But what's in front of us now, I think, is pretty straightforward. The building inspector is correct, and the research everyone at the town did confirms that, in my opinion.
Chris?
I would also agree. I think that Jay's decision is perfectly fine. I would agree completely. And whether or not the structure is suitable for a three-family is something that could be discussed if we were to receive a variance application for it, but I don't think it's a structure issue right now. It's a zoning issue, and we're not in the place to make a decision to kind of overturn that at the moment for this one particular property.
All right. With that, I agree with the balance of the board. So I will say that we are going to uphold the building commissioner's decision regarding 39 Upper Church Street, that it cannot be converted to a three-family residence because such is not permitted in a Residence B zoning district. All those in favor? Or, excuse me, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. All right. Allison or Lynn, do we have anything else for this evening? All right. With that, I will entertain a motion to close this zoning board of appeals meeting. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you, everybody.